That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is now 6:03. If everyone would please stand for our invocation and our pledges. Please bow with me. Most gracious and loving God, bless us with your presence, bless us with your peace. Give us wisdom and discernment in our discussions tonight so that we may make the best decisions for our school district. Bless our students, teachers, our staff, our administration, and we pray. Please join me in honoring our country, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all. And now our state. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, Mr. Husbands.
Thank you, Mr. Husbands.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Item 2B, Special District Recognition, District Support Staff Ambassador Awards. Dr. Stockton.
Let me ask Dr. Hines, our Deputy Superintendent, to come and make the announcements.
Good evening, President Sanders, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. It is an honor to be here tonight to present to the Board of Trustees for special recognition by you some of our outstanding employees in our district support departments as recommended by Dr. Stockton. As you know, you've been doing the Board of Trustees Ambassador Awards for different departments, and I know that you know that this, the district also has other departments that provide great support to our schools and our teachers, and tonight we're going to recognize some of the members that make that possible. From the departments that are Communication Departments, the Curriculum and Instruction Department, Finance Department, Human Resources Department, and the Technology Department. We'll start with, I'm going to start with the Communications Employee, Amanda Embry. Amanda's here, and I'm going to ask Amanda to come on up, and when I call names, she'll want to come up. Amanda is in the print shop, and she goes above and beyond to ensure that the print shop runs smoothly. She's always willing to go the extra mile for our campuses and departments, and all while wearing a smile. Her outstanding work ethic contributes to the department and makes her a valuable employee. We're thanking her. I know Amanda's got some family here and support here tonight, so if y'all want to stand up. From the Curriculum and Instruction Ambassadors are Dolly Renaud and Angie Kennedy. They would come up. Now, Dolly has just received her 25-year pen this year, and when people, and when people call or arrive at the Assessment Center, and it's always busy at the Assessment Center with all the tests we give, they are greeted by Dolly who always has a smile and loves helping each person she comes in contact with. She exemplifies professionalism and a commitment to excellence. Also from the Curriculum Department is Angie Kennedy, who works in the Special Education Department. She's worked in the Conroe Independent School District for 14 years. She's known as the heartbeat of Special Education Department. She's reliable and is always willing to help anything that needs to be done, and Angie is not only dedicated and helpful, she also has a positive influence on others. Dolly has some support here tonight. They want to stand up. Angie has some folks with her. Next is Janet Bradley, who represents the Finance Department. Come on up. Now, Janet's been dealing with the diagnosis and an ongoing treatment of cancer for over a year, and while doing this, she's still maintained a fantastic attitude during this time. It has never let this huge challenge affect her duties at work. In fact, she has considered her work and her associates in the office to be positive therapy in dealing with this personal medical issue and challenge. We're thankful for all that Janet does. Janet has some, some folks with her. The Human Resources Ambassador Representative is Olivia Ramon. Come up, Olivia. Ms. Ramon is a hard worker who is time conscientious and pays particular attention to details to ensure that the job is done well. Her leadership skills inspire others to meet the expectations of the job. Often, her peers turn to her for answers and to help problem-solve situations that arise. Thanks for all you do. There's some folks from HR here for support tonight. Yeah, y'all standing up? Next is Hilda Flores. Hilda's going to come on up, who works in the Technology Department, and she is also deserving of this outstanding recognition. Ms. Flores has 31 years of service in the Conroe Independent School District. She currently, and most everybody knows her, is the, the voice behind the technology help desk, and so that's a big job, and Hilda goes the extra mile to make sure that the questions and problems get resolved as quickly as possible, and she's always willing to step in wherever she is needed. She does a great job for us, and we're thankful to have her. There's some folks here for hanging. So, thanks for being here. Each of these employees is an ambassador for the district by performing their daily tasks with an unwavering commitment to the children, the parents, and the employees of the Conroe Independent School District, and we are fortunate to have them as a member of our team and our family, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for all you did. We appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you for all you did. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for all you did. We appreciate it so much. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to recognize a very special group of young men who have done a great job in representing our school and our community. I'd like to introduce the best baseball coach in the United States, high school baseball coach, I can't speak for the professional level, Mr. Ronnie Smith, to introduce our players who are here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. We'd like to thank you for honoring our team and asking us up here. It is truly an honor and a privilege to serve Conroe Independent School District as teachers and coaches at the Woodlands High School. It truly was a blessing this year to be on just a small part of these young men's journey through life and along the way pick up a 5A state championship. It was well deserved, well worked for throughout the entire season. Well, go ahead. Because of traffic problems, and I almost got caught myself, or I did get caught, but because of traffic and a big baseball tournament, we're real light on numbers, but I do want to bring up my assistant coaches, Shane Graves, Barry Wilson, Chris Harden, Chad Rozell. These are the four coaches that have been here. They're integral part of our program at the high school. The members we have here today, Michael McKinstry, Chris Andretti, Dylan Warren, Alex Hale, and Casey Schneider. All five of these young men will be back next year, which is a good thing for us. We don't, we had about 17 seniors. I think Coach Jeff Lilly is going to walk through the door right now, or somebody in a green shirt that looked like. He was, he was one of those that got caught up in traffic. Jeff Lilly. And the last thing I just want to say, and I've said it at every, every opportunity I've had, whether it be in the media or whether it be at an event like this, is that this, these young men were a, and are, one of the highest character group of young men I've ever been around. Not only did they represent their school and their community on the baseball field, but they also represented their school and their community off the baseball field, in the community, in the school, which is what we, really what we expect of them being members of an athletic program at the Woodlands High School. So again, we'd like to thank you for honoring us here this evening, and this is our state champion group.
On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I'd like to present this plaque to the 5A state champions for 2013. It's always an honor and a pleasure to be able to do this, but you're a special team, and I'm sure we'll all appreciate seeing this in the halls of the Woodlands High School, and best of luck on your future journeys, too.
Show them how they're doing. Do the wall. Congratulations. 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 Good job, Coach. Congratulations. Hard work. Congratulations for all you did.
What position do you play? Doesn't happen, doesn't happen more than once by the way. Sure. It does every video of more than once by the way. So, thank you. Congratulations again.
We won't see you and hear us again until next year, right? Yeah, we'll take it back. Yeah.
That's great. All right. Item 4A, Curriculum and Instruction, Preliminary, Secondary, Tax, STAR, and EOC Results, 2013. Dr. Stockton.
I'll ask Janet Gibson and Miss Dale Drummond to come and present. Results. Preliminary results.
Good evening, Mr. President Sanders, board members, and Dr. Stockton. Tonight, Mrs. Drummond and I would like to present the preliminary scores for STAR three through eight. Mrs. Drummond will present STAR and, of course, in secondary tax results. As you, as you are aware, this is our second year for the implementation of the STAR assessments, and most of the STAR data that we will show you tonight has a two-year trend. At this time, we would like to share our scores and how we compare to the state's scores. And before I get started, I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. William Kelly, if you would stand, please. He is the one behind the scenes that crunches all these data and makes it, puts it into a format that, that you see tonight, so thank you, William. As we look at these scores, I'm going to start from the Spanish scores and work over. One of the things I would like to remind you is that in this STAR platform, that you've heard the phrase "met standard" in the past, and now that translates to satisfactory performance. So, these data that we're showing you, we've, last year, 2012, compared to this year, 2013. Most of you, several of you, also know that over the years, that it has been our goal for our bilingual students to exit the bilingual program by third grade, and we call that, we say that we have an early exit program. So, we want our numbers, we want to reduce our, our, our numbers of students taking the Spanish assessments as our grade levels increase. I'd also like you to think that at each one of these grade levels, we tested about 4,000 students. So, when you look at these Spanish results, you see that last year this time, we had a 46%. And we took a good, hard look at our bilingual literacy classrooms, and we did a number of things to strengthen our language to literacy classrooms. You can see that we've made great progress. We have more progress ahead, and this represents 277 students. You can also see that we improved from last year with our English, taking our students that took the assessment in English, and we have clearly outperformed the state. Mathematics, we see a very similar trend. We have in our Spanish, our students that took the assessment in Spanish, we have 153 students. You can see that we have made great progress from last year this time, as well as we are outperforming the state. You can also see that the state has a trend, that they're somewhat flat, they gain the point. We have increased from 82% to 88%, and we are again significantly outperforming the state. When we look at our fourth grade scores in our Spanish results, this number represents 106 students, and if you're, if you're following, then these numbers are decreasing, and although we, we still have some work to do, we still feel, we feel very good that most of our students, the majority of our students are taking the assessment in English. You hear again, you can see a slight trend at both the state and CISD, where each one has lost a couple of points, but here again, we are significantly, significantly outperforming the state. We look at our writing, our, this, our Spanish score, our Spanish results represents 130 students. We're a little bit flat. We are again working on our writing skills with this, with the, with this group of students. You can see that there was a slight decline with the Spanish scores at the state level. The state remained the same, but here again, we are significantly, significantly outperforming the state. In mathematics, Spanish results represents 58 students, and remember, we test about 4,000. So, here again, although we have work to do, we feel very proud that our students are taking the assessment in English, and here again, you can see the pattern. It's very obvious that our, our students are doing very well, and we are greatly outperforming the state. When we get to fifth grade, I have to take a step back and remind you that last year this time, in our fifth and our eighth grade, our SSI grade levels, our student success initiative, and our students have three opportunities to pass the STAR assessment. Last year this time, they were only given one because it was a phase in, so we didn't feel it was, we wanted to compare last year, one administration, to this year, two administrations. So, we'll start that trend now. When the scores came to us, they also came combined, English and Spanish, but I can tell you that only 25 of this group took the reading assessment in Spanish, and here again, you can see that we're, we're, our performance is very strong.
Why did they come combined in fifth grade?
You know, we really don't have an answer for that.
They're not. That's good enough.
They don't usually, but this year they did. They, they came combined.
Why they wanted?
We may get a, they may be separated later. Okay. Mathematics, same, 93%, 87% the state.
How many?
Uh, Spanish, we had 19, 19 students. Okay, fifth grade science, fifth grade science, here again, we had a 20 students taking the fifth grade science assessment. We, we, we have 16 students that did not pass the assessment. We know who those students are. We are following them to sixth grade, and we will give them the support that they need. And here again, you can see that we are greatly outperforming the state. The state has stayed flat. We've moved up two points, and we have a very strong performance. In sixth grade, we do not have a Spanish assessment that is provided by the state, so in mathematics, we have, you can see a slight, a slight dip with math at the state level. Our performance is still strong, 87%. In the state, 74%. And a similar trend, we have 84% and 71%. So, we are very proud of these scores. We, we still are very focused on depth and rigor with our, our students and our teachers, and this is Drummond.
Dr. Gibson, I have one quick question for you. The podium, in the sixth grade on the reading and the mathematics, I know there was a slight decline at both the state level and the district level. Is there a difference in the quality of the assessment, or you mentioned rigor, and I presumed, but I want to make sure that my presumption is correct, that the rigor of the exam is greater?
We are not able to know the content of the assessment.
Correct.
But when we do talk about rigor, we talk about, when we move from tax to STAR, STAR is a far more, is an assessment that measures higher-level thinking.
Correct.
So, when we talk about depth and rigor, we have to teach our students to think differently in order to answer each item.
But I agree. I'm sorry. I agree with your comment. Typically, when we look at the state and we see the exact same trend at the state level, and looking at the numbers of students, there's something going on here in the test.
That they're evolving the test.
Several questions on the test that nobody can answer.
And I believe, as Dr. Gibson stated, to me, it's more, we're stepping up our game.
Yes.
We expect there probably may be a slight decline, but as we continue that depth and rigor that you described.
Yes. And often, you will see that at a grade level. That is true.
Could, could we flip back to fifth grade?
Typically, when we look at the state and we see the exact same trend at the state level, and looking at the numbers of students, there's something going on.
There's several questions on the test that nobody can answer.
And I believe as Doctor Gibson stated, to me, it's more, we're stepping up our game.
Yes.
We expect there probably may be a slight decline, but as we continue that depth and rigor that you described.
Yes. And often you will see that at a grade level. That is true.
Could we flip back to 5th grade? Is that a problem? I just wanted to, and you pick any one, either science at 20 or math. And I know they're together. But let's go back to that one that says 20% right there, whatever, right there, Spanish. Okay, it's science. Okay. What you're saying is, we're, you know, at 86% versus the state at 73. And we have what you would say is early promotion of English as a second language students in that group. And we're, you're sliding the kids over there, you're whipping up on the state's average, and this 20% affects a handful of kids.
Yes.
And I mean, one is too many. We all, nobody's making any excuses about those 16 or whatever you said, but we are, I mean, you know.
Yes, that is.
With those kids elevated, I really would like a copy of this. I mean, this is the kind of thing that our school district needs to, I mean, like, show it rotary, you know, seriously. I am very proud of that. Congratulations to you and your teachers, and I know they like hate to see you coming because I know you push, 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 and I take that the way I meant it. Take that the way I meant it, okay? Somebody said to me, when both Kathy's come to your campus, you're in trouble? Okay, but anyway. Let me just say, you know, it is.
Let me start collecting my things.
Your heart. You don't need to run anywhere from me because I appreciate all you do and all you accomplish.
Thank you very much.
That might have been a backhanded compliment, but I meant it. Thank you, Doctor Gibson.
Good evening, President Sanders and members of the board. It's a pleasure for me to share our STAR scores with you. And you will see similar trends in secondary. We actually see in reading, we're significantly outperforming the state, and we improved our scores from last year, and there was a gain at the state level. In writing, we're flat, but we're still outperforming the state very well. And in math, with 81% as compared to 71%, we're very pleased. In 8th grade, as you know, 8th grade is an S S I year. So the same scenario fits here. Our 8th graders in reading and math have taken the test twice as opposed to last year taking it once. We did very, very well with both test administrations. Our reading score is 94%, math is 96%. In science, we improved from last year, 85% as compared to the state's 75. And in social studies, 76 as compared to the state's 60. Now we get into end of course exams. And I'm glad that you had the discussion about rigor. There is a difference in what we've been doing with end of course. In English, the English test is comprised of two tests. Reading and writing are separate, which is different from tax. We outperformed the state in reading, 77% as compared to 65%. In 2013, and you will see this pattern throughout all of the E O C, the 9th graders took the test as well as students took it last year and didn't pass. So in E O C, those are combined for your scores. In writing, we show a 60% as compared to the state's 48, keeping in mind that we had all of the kids testing. This test in writing is much different than what the kids have had in the past. They write two essays. Tax was personal narrative. E O C is expository and narrative for the English 1. English 2, we test, and this was the first year that our kids took English 2, E O C. The kids wrote persuasive, expository. And then there was a field test, and it could have been a combination, but the kids don't know which essay is a field test. The difference in the English test also in writing, in tax, they can write two pages. On E O C, it's one, 26 lines. And this test is timed. It's a four-hour test where tax was completed. So not to mention the rigor. So just to give you a little frame of reference, we are pleased, we outperformed the state in both areas significantly, but we know that we have work to do. In mathematics, Algebra 1, we had an 86%, which we're really pleased. This is first time testers, plus retesters. And in geometry, for the first year of taking geometry, 90%. In biology, 92% as compared to the state's 85%. And in chemistry, 88% as compared to 84. And then in social studies, 86% as compared to the state's 75%. World history, 86% as compared to 70%. So we feel that our students have done very well. And we have work to do, and I can assure you that that work started a while back. So we are, we're on it. The last year for tax has a report for you. For this last year's juniors, and we're very pleased. In E L A, 97%. We outperformed the state. In math, 91% compared to the state's 89. You can see the trend at the state. We figure that math test was a little bit more difficult this year. And then in science, 98% as compared to 96 at the state level, and 99% in social studies, right with the state at 99%. So overall, we're very, very pleased. Now we have a ways to go, but we're ready.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond.
I had to just take, first, I want to say, I think we all have a great job we all are doing. My second question, we've heard a lot about STAR. I don't want to dive into a deep conversation, but I was just, just a few sentences. What was the general feedback from students?
That's an interesting question. I think the kids overall, the comments that I received from principals, some kids were surprised. They didn't, you know, they really meant what they said, that the test was going to be more rigorous. I don't know that I heard negatives, really.
Audience participation at this point?
Right. In my small little pond, I did not hear any negative at all, and I think that was also a big part of that, is the time. It seemed like a big stressor to children, but I was just curious as to kind of some of the informal feedback that you had received. Can you explain to me, they changed the law? They changed it to five tests?
The English, the English 1 and English 2 will be one test, one test. Where we had reading and writing over.
Okay.
We have English 1 and English 2, Algebra 1, best history, biology. Shared with you scores tonight for the first test administration because we were very pleased with our result. That will be the last time you see scores reported, geometry.
Since the 11th grade, right? I mean, that won't happen anymore in the court.
Best history is an 11th grade course, so it would be tested in the 11th on E O C. But other than that, the others are pretty solid.
So it's being reduced from how much to five? Fifteen?
Feedback's been very good on that.
And then the credits, you know, it's still four years of English and.
So far, we're not, the graduation requirements don't go into effect until the following year, not 13th, 14th. So we're waiting for the State Board of Education to send direction.
So we're still four by four?
We're still four by four. Stay in the court.
And there'll be a lot of clarifications coming up in the next couple of months, and we'll get to you.
All right, thank you very much. Item 5A, amendment to the H2U agreement to provide employee clinic services in Conroe, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Cox, if you'll come present that item.
President Sanders, members of the board, Dr. Stockton recommend the Board of Trustees approve the amendment to agreement for professional services to provide C I S D employee health and wellness clinic services in Conroe. First Onsite, a subsidiary of HCA Hospital currently operates the Conroe I S D Health and Wellness Center located at Oak Ridge Elementary. This facility has proven to be a real valuable benefit to our employees. We believe that access to employee health and wellness clinic services in Conroe would increase utilization of the employee clinic, which would benefit both our employees and the district. Under the proposed agreement, First Onsite would provide clinical services to our employees through Conroe Physician Services located at 508 Medical Center Boulevard in Conroe. And this is, this is actually attached to the Conroe Medical Center. It's in, and it's a very nice facility. I've been. Under terms of this agreement, C I S D will purchase eight hours per week of health and wellness clinic services for $250 per hour. As needed, C I S D can increase the number of clinic service hours. Additionally, if we so choose, we can terminate the provision of clinical services at the Conroe location with 90 days notice. I recommend that you approve this benefit to our employees.
We approve. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. You said that we're purchasing eight hours per week.
Correct.
Is that correct? On Exhibit C, schedule for clinic locations and hours, would that be in the event we see the need to increase it to those hours?
I believe that's the hour.
Is that the hours of the other locations?
The first one is the hours of the current clinic. This is the same, this is part of the master agreement. So those represent the hours for the existing clinic. If you see.
It's item 5, then talks about, so would you foresee or measure that at some point in time, we would increase the hours?
That'd be strictly driven by utilization.
And who would be monitoring that utilization to advise us?
Well, I'll monitor it.
Okay.
We'll report it to the board, hopefully.
Mr. Cox, you mentioned that, and there is no question that the availability of healthcare and a reduced copay is going to be beneficial to our employees, and we're all for that always, understand that. But you said it was going to benefit the district, and I want to discuss about that in just a second because the other clinic, as we've determined, really hasn't benefited the district. I mean, just in cold, hard fact terms, it really hasn't benefited it monetarily. Is that correct?
The fund is not, is not profitable from that. The district actually is getting some benefit from it, but the health fund is not. Now, and the district is funding that deficit, so.
Would you say the district is, when you say that the district is, is that in absenteeism and those kinds of things?
Okay. I understand that. I'll buy that. Let me ask this, what is the, in this clinic situation, there's a contracted rate at the contracts with, you know, usually with Satter Clinic or with Conroe Physicians or whoever. Is it the same contracted rate that they see patients under? I mean, is it costing us on the backside the same amount even though it's costing the employee the less? You understand what I'm saying?
We're paying a flat fee of $250 an hour. Now, our clinic, our, under our Aetna health plan, we pay an average, I think it's $57 or $58 a visit. So bottom line is, if we get four visits an hour, we're going to about break even. With five, we're going to be a little bit profitable and hope better. And if we get under four, we're losing.
So there is, let me just clarify, and I didn't understand.
When I say we're losing money, the health fund.
The health fund.
But we're covering that.
Let me just clarify, if I go to my doctor under my Aetna plan, if I have Aetna, and I pay my $25, okay? Aetna agrees to pay them 67, 58, whatever the number is, okay? Or the combination of the two is what the doctor's office receives, okay? What you're telling me is they're receiving the $250 an hour plus the $10 each employee goes.
We get the $10.
Pardon?
We get the $10.
So it's, our flat cost is 250 an hour, no more than that.
Less whatever, $10. I mean, if we have five visits, our cost is $200.
Thank you.
So the max that the district pays per hour, regardless of the services provided, is 250?
Now, if nobody goes, we still pay 250.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Cox.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other discussions or questions? Do we have a motion and a second? Discussion, all right. We'd ask for a vote, all in favor. Oppose, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Item 5B, bond referendum update, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Foster, if you'll come present that item, please.
President Sanders, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. This is our update for the 2008 Bond Referendum, project's underway. We're going to start with the Conroe High School 9th grade campus. This project is nearing completion. It opens for school again in August, so it is, it is on schedule, tracking exactly like when we would like it to. As you can see from this picture here, the exterior masonry is completed. We are beginning to plan and work to work on the exterior, set up the new landscaping, things of that nature now. The new bus loop, which is the bus driveway that goes around the entire campus, is, has made its way around the entire campus, the tie-ins to the driveways along the main street are in progress. You can see the interior of the building. This is the renovation portion. You're looking at what is the cafeteria section. We've opened that cafeteria up to give it a lighter, more open and inviting feel. You can see the floor tile is in place. The paint finishes in the kitchen proper are in progress as we speak. As you can see, the critical path for this project was the gymnasium additions, the gym floor is in, it is stained, it is very pretty. We belong to Anne K. Snyder Elementary School. This project is essentially complete. You can see here, the scaffold that you see in the picture now has since been, started to come down. This project is done, I mean, for all intents. The classroom furniture is being moved in, the admin furniture is being moved in, the principal is occupying that campus now. We expect the teachers to move in on, on schedule, first part of August. Moving on to John V. Pete Junior High School. And this project, project is essentially complete. The classroom furniture is being moved in and assembled. The admin furniture is in and assembled. The principal will have his internet access tomorrow, I understand. The, I mean, so the admin staff is beginning the process of moving and set that campus up. Flex 14, this project is on schedule. It is scheduled to open for school in August of 2014. You can see it is approximately 40% complete. The exterior masonry is going on. The, they're working through the high areas around the backside of the building, which will become significant on the next project you see. The interior of the building, the systems are going in, the fireproofing is in, the roofing is going on, so it is becoming a dry working environment a little bit more every day. Flex 16, this project is on schedule as well. This contractor is moving from the front around the other direction, so it looks a little bit different. It is on schedule, as I said. It is scheduled to open for school in August of 2014. Interior, much the same as Flex School Number 14. The school, the interior systems are in, the roofing is being applied and going on as they move around the building. This is some of the minor projects. I'm going to talk about a couple of minor projects that we've got going on. Runyon Elementary site improvements here. We're adding more canopy for the bus pickup and parent pickup, drop off, bus loops, some improvements in the overall circulation on that campus. As you can see, the canopy is the next scope of work going on right now. They're putting the masonry around the columns. I'll be doing the canopy tops in the next week or so. You can see, we've extended the parking lot there. When we extended the parking lot, we also had to extend their playfield. The gradient on that site goes down pretty significantly, so we've given them a level playing surface. What you're looking at there is temporary irrigation to establish grass growth. That grass, the seed, hydroseed has been planted, so we expect to have a good stand of grass by the time school starts. We're looking at that same playfield from the opposite, opposite end of the school. At Conroe High School, the plumbing repairs that have been ongoing, moving well. I mean, what you're going to see, because it's a hard project to put into pictures, it is going as well as we could have expected it to. We dug up a little bit of the front yard, got the front yard back in place, so we should have grass growing by the time.
What about the hole in the counselor's office?
The hole in the counselor's office is, at this point, becoming dirt again, so it's in, it's in the process of going back together. We haven't started the walls and concrete yet, but they're still working far below the surface, putting the dirt back in.
After I saw the bricks held up by two-by-fours at McCullough, I'm not worried about a hole in the floor.
And I'm glad you didn't visit Conroe High School. That's a difference. The same problem in a different direction.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, appreciate it. All right. Item 6A, financial reports, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Rice, if you'll come to present that item.
Mr. Sanders, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. Tonight I'm here to present the financial statements for the district for the month of June. The first statement, well, these statements will include the general fund, the debt service fund, our child nutrition and self-funded insurance. The first statement we'll look at is our balance sheet, show the assets, liabilities, and the fund balances for each one of these funds. Each month, we always like to look at the position of our cash and our investments. As you can see, the majority of our funds are our external pooled funds and invested. And we also like to track how our property tax collections are coming in. And as you can see, we're bumping the 100% collection percentage. That does include delinquent collections, but we're bumping that again this year. The next statement is the income statement. It shows our revenues and expenditures and fund balances for each one of the funds, looking at the local sources of revenues. As we can see in the general fund and debt service, the majority of those revenues are from property taxes, as we discussed, food services from food sales, and our self-funded insurances from our premium contributions. We can also look at our expenditures at the functional level. One amount I'd like to put, point out is, if you look at the other uses and sources at the bottom of the page, that just reflects the transfers out that we've done from the general fund this year, $6 million, I mean, $7 million for construction projects, $1 million of that being for the road that we put in, and then also $3 million transferred to the self-funded insurance. The next statement shows our projected fund balance. Right now, we're projecting a decrease of about $2.4 million. As we're getting the numbers tighter, as we get closer to the end of the year, we think that'll come closer than balance. Our projection for our debt service fund has not changed since last month, still looking at a decrease of about 3.9. The projection in child nutrition has not changed either, about $212,000. Looking at our self-funded insurance, for the month of June, we had revenues of $2.3 million, expenses of $2.7 million, for a decrease of a little over $450,000. For the year, $26.5 million worth of revenues, $26.9 million worth of expenses for revenues under expenses of about $400,000. Looking at the Health and Wellness Center, June participation, 441 visits. Looking at the Health and Wellness Center, June participation, four hundred and forty-one visits to the healthcare, health clinic, average of five hundred and seventy-four a month. Looking at our five hundred and twenty-seven million dollar bond referendum, we've currently sold four hundred and forty-one million of that. We have eighty-six million authorized but unissued. We've currently expended and encumbered four hundred and thirty-three million of that. We have estimated to complete our projects of the bond referendum, about twenty-three million dollars. That gives us a total projected forecast, two hundred and fifty-six million dollars, leaving us with a contingency of about seventy million dollars to finish out the program. Investments at the end of the month, for May, three hundred and twelve million dollars we had invested. At the end of June, it's two hundred and ninety million. Weighted average maturity of our pools is fifty-seven days. Yield and maturity of our portfolio is point zero nine three three. And our benchmark, the ninety-day T-bill, point zero three five.
Mr. Rice or Mr. Cox, on the health insurance, we have two more months remaining. Do you think it's going to necessitate moving about another million over because generally the last few months of our year are some of our highest? And we're consistently running almost a half million, two dollars, and it looks like we may need to move a million over?
I, I would think that probably it's to- And I, I will probably be making a recommendation at the August. You know, each year in August, we do some money surplus to the Debt Service Fund, and I will probably-
Do it at that time?
Be adding a line item for health.
Thank you.
Bye.
Mr. Sanders, if I may, I'd like to introduce Mr. Rick Reeves. He's our new Director of Purchasing, and I'd like to introduce him.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to have you here. Thank you very much. All right. Item seven A, deliberation in executive session regarding safety and security audits. Close session of the board will now be held on matters contained in the notice for this meeting is authorized by Section five five one point zero seven four and five five one point zero seven six of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be either at A, this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting, or B, at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof, as the board shall determine. Closed session of the board will now be held, the time is now six fifty-five. Next item on the agenda is ten A, receive required safety and security audit. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the district's safety and security audit in accordance with Texas Education Code, Section thirty-seven point one zero eight, and the Texas School Safety Center guidelines.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item ten B, local policy update, ninety-seven information, Dr. Stockton.
I'll ask Mrs. Gladys to present this item.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. Y'all are really familiar with getting updates now, reading your little yellow vantage points. This one's the last one from the prior legislative session, and they'll start trickling in from this legislative session. There are only three local policies implicated, I've explained them in your item. You'll be asked to adopt them on the sixteenth. Questions about them, I'd be happy to field them.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gladys. All right, item ten D. This meeting of the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees is convened on July sixteenth.
Wait, it was ten C.
One more, you guys need to pick two happy souls to be the Tasmie delegate.
Thank you so much. I just checked right by it, thank you.
People were hoping to skip it.
Item ten C, yeah, selection of Tasmie delegate. Dr. Stockton?
I'll turn it back over to me, all right?
I have a nomination.
I do too.
Daytron and Jessica.
I'll second, I'll second that.
They may be president when they get back.
I'll second that.
We need one.
For one and then-
We need one and an alternate. So who, who are you nominating?
Who let you know that they were leaving first?
I think Jessica's a, as a school person.
As representing Jessica, with Daytron as the alternate.
All right, there's a motion to accept from Mr. Huskins, Jessica Powell as the primary, and Daytron Williams as the alternate, and-
I'll second it.
Mr. Haynes has seconded that motion, is there any discussion? Only comment I would make is I did contact Jessica and ask if she would be willing, and I didn't get her call back, so I'm not sure. But I, she probably, at least she's been contacted.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, for doing that.
She didn't say no.
She didn't say no. That's very right, Dr. Brown.
Thank you for making that phone call.
Yes, ma'am, glad to. All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say, or raise your hand? And all opposed, no. Approved unanimously. All right, now I apologize, item ten D. This meeting of the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees is convened on July sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen. The following members of the board are present, Dr. Mel Brown, Ms. CJ Haynes, Mr. Ray Sanders, Mr. John Huskins, and Mr. Scott Kidd. For the record, a quorum is present. We are meeting for the purpose of hearing an appeal in accordance with local board policy DGBA. This grievance involves a complaint made against two district staff members by another staff member. Therefore, under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Sections five five one point zero seven four and five five one point zero eight two one, this hearing will be held in closed session. Everyone not associated with this hearing should now leave the room. The board will take no action while in executive session. The time is now eight eleven PM, and we're going to allow about five minutes to-